Good morning, St. Louis.
Good morning.
Good morning, St. Louis. Y'all are a good-looking crowd. Y'all are a good-looking crowd. We just want to start by thanking all of you for coming out on this beautiful morning. We know that it's a Monday morning. We know that there's a lot of other places that you could be, and instead, you all are here, and we are all here. Okay, so today, November 28th, 2022, we are all gathered to watch the inauguration of Madam President, Dr. Green. Over the course of Meghan's political career, she's been a champion of economic justice, of social justice, of racial justice. When she came to your front doors, when you received letters from her in the mail, she talked to you about her vision for building a St. Louis for all of us. She acknowledged those that have been historically left behind and displaced, and she promised that on day one, she would get to work. And today, we've all made it to the official day one.
Buenos dias, St. Louis. Buenos dias. It is an honor to be here, being the voice of the Latino, the Latne, the Hispanic community in St. Louis and the foreign-born community. And it is a great honor to participate in this very historic occasion, the first woman president of the Board of Aldermen. And I'd like to introduce my friend, Alicia Sinner. And myself, I'm Gilberto Pinella with STL TV this morning, and it is, once again, a great pleasure.
Yes, okay. So like Gilberto said, Gilberto is a host of St. Louis TV and a leader in Hispanic and business community. I am Alicia Sanyay. I serve on the Board of Education for St. Louis, and I also had the pleasure of being Meghan's political director during campaign season. Today, I also get the pleasure of introducing and calling up our very first speaker. One of the things that Meghan is most passionate about, and one of the things that every single one of us in this room should be passionate about, is making sure that we're building a St. Louis that our youth can prosper in. Our youth are our future. Our scholars are our future. When we see young leadership, we have to rise to the occasion. We have to support them, and we have to invite them to stages and give them places to get used to being in positions of power and knowing and being their own decision-makers. With that being said, I get the pleasure of introducing activist, organizer, knocking doors, phone-banking, canvasser, Twitter extraordinaire, Marquis Govan.
So throughout this campaign, I had the honor of serving as Meghan Green's field director. And I am so happy that she chose me, a 19-year-old skinny black kid from the north side of St. Louis, to do that job. You see, today, we are gathered here for a movement shaker, a status quo breaker. We are here on behalf of Dr. Meghan Aliyah Green. You see, when times were tough at the Board, when folks were scared to call out corruption, when folks were scared to say something about the direction this city was going in, we had Dr. Meghan Aliyah Green. When it was time to stand up for Black life, when it wasn't so popular to say the moniker "Black Lives Matter," this woman from upstate New York was in the streets protesting. See, today is the culmination of a movement. It is not about one person. It is about the story of Michael Brown. It is about Stockley. It is about the summer of 2020. It is about years and decades of disinvestments and inequity. It is about the woman from upstate New York who came to St. Louis, and in her first day in St. Louis, somehow wandered onto the north side. And the officer stopped her, and he said, "Ma'am, I don't think you belong here." And her response to him was, "No, no, I'm here. I'm looking at this community. I love how beautiful it is." There is something about a woman who goes to the most disinvested community within a city and says, "There's something beautiful here." That's Dr. Meghan Aliyah Green. And so she has spent her past years on the Board, not only here in the halls of power, but out on the streets with the people. Because just like we have the people's mayor, she will be the people's president of the Board of Aldermen. And she knows the future that we need to build for each and every single one of us. She says, "Gone are the days of putting big developers over the children of our city." She says, "Gone are the days of mass incarceration, where we criminalize you before we try to restore you." She says, "Gone are the days of lobbyists and folk running around City Hall, giving out tip and tax abatement like it's water." She says, "Together, we will, together, we will, build a St. Louis that works for everybody." And as I end, to the virulent misogynist and those who give cover through their personal narratives to them, who prefer to call people-centered, justice-seeking women "skanky beings," well, St. Louis prefers to call them "Madam Mayor," "Madam Controller," and "Madam President."
If you want truth spoken power, just let the young people do it, okay? That's why we let the young people go. That's why we let the young people go. Thank you so much for your remarks, Marquis. We knew that you were gonna bring the heat and that you were gonna bring the truth, and you definitely did that.
I will say, "Go, Gen Z." And now, I'd like to take this opportunity to make a few acknowledgements. And first, I would like to acknowledge the elected officials that are in this room in this beautiful rutanta. I also would like to welcome and acknowledge the community leaders that are here with us and our city staff who's also here pressing. So please, a round of applause and welcome. Welcome.
Okay, and I get the pleasure of being the one to call down President, Madam President, Meghan Aliyah Green and the Board of Aldermen. Okay, so we're in City Hall. We're in St. Louis. And one of the things that is so special and so unique to St. Louis is our diversity, diversity of people, diversity of religion. And today, we are blessed to have someone amongst us who is a leader in our spiritual and religious community, but also in our social justice community. She presides over St. John's beloved church community, where on any given Sunday, you can find her passing out food. You can find her telling her congregation about the days in which they should vote. And you can find them praying with their hands, absolutely at the pulpit, but also with their feet. Pastor Higgins is known, you may not even know her as Pastor Higgins, because also, she's my pastor, so thank you so much, because that's not an easy feat. And in addition to being my pastor, she leads Faith for Justice. She works for Missouri Jobs for Justice. She is the definition of what it looks like to be in leadership. And so I am so honored and so happy to get the pleasure to bring up Pastor Higgins, who's going to open us up and continue the energy that we have in this room with a prayer.
Meghan, congratulations.
Let's take a moment and meditate. Whatever name you call on, even it's the name, even if it's the name of no one, whatever spirit you bring into the room, even if it's a spirit of cautious optimism, will you bring all that you are into this space and concentrate? Because today, we are here to celebrate. And so I would ask you that even though we are fully aware, many of us in the activist community, that right now, November's not over. We're still in Native Heritage Month. We're still fully aware that the ground upon which we tread this morning belongs to the Osage, belongs to the people of the mound, belongs to the Missouri, belongs not to any of us unless, like some, you have Indigenous blood in your veins. But you, as a testament to truth, now see a truth speaker in power. And that is reason enough to celebrate. Not a small game, for there's no such thing as a little victory. And will you, in that spirit, bring, even if it's just a morsel of praise, will you bring it and concentrate it on the woman who needs all of the support, meditative quotes, and candles lit as she can get? Is that all right? Let's pray. To the one who teaches us to show mercy, to the one who teaches us to walk humbly, we ask, oh, now, right now, that you would descend and help our people to ascend. Help us to follow a leader who accepts and longs for the feedback, consensus, fellowship, and support of the very people she longs to lead. Will you descend and help the people to ascend and follow a woman who leads a larger group? Bring, right now, oh God, oh universe, oh ancestors, oh ones that we put our trust in. Bring not only a power we never thought we would ever see, bring a power we already knew we had. We ask today that the representatives of the people, those who continue to speak that all power is of the people and for the people, would truly be the source and the place that is willing to humbly and boldly guide the people. And now, open our hearts for this time of celebration. Open our hearts for this time of joy. And let this day be rooted in our minds. So in days to come, when the road is rough and the going feels tough, we can look back and say, "We celebrated something." Not as the end of a journey of elections and knocking doors, but as the beginning of a season of people power. We bless every name that is deserving of it, and we lift up the name of our friend and now our leader, Meghan Aliyah Green. Ashay and amen.
Pastor Higgins, I want you to be my pastor, please. It is definitely true that we need to acknowledge the land that we are in right now, which is not our land. It's the Indigenous people's land. And now, I want to go ahead and introduce somebody who is very important, who's been a friend for a long time, and somebody that's working really hard to make St. Louis a better place, a place that works for everyone. And that is Madam Controller, Darlene Green, please.
Good morning. Giving all honor to God. So the problem is, I can't see you with the glasses. But I can't see what I wrote with the glasses. So I just want to greet you first, say good morning. It's beautiful to see you, and it's really good to see how beautiful you are out there. And I want to say thank you for coming. Thank you for honoring this time this morning. So now the glasses. I'm honored to be here this morning. I'm grateful to be here this morning. And I am humbled to be invited to participate in today's ceremony. I want to say congratulations to our newly-elected president of the Board of Aldermen, Dr. Meghan Green. The very first female elected to the position. I am the first female elected to the position of Controller. Tashara Jones is the first African-American female elected to the position of mayor. Together, we are making history as the first all-female Board of Estimate and Apportionment. I look forward to continuing the important work of making our city, our neighborhoods, our streets safer, and improving on our delivery of city services while we move St. Louis forward in job growth and regional partnerships. Working together, we can introduce transformative public safety initiatives that will reduce violent crime in our city and that will reform criminal justice. We can streamline economic incentives that we give to developers. We can support improving public education and increasing positive outcomes for housing and healthcare needs. We can support protecting city assets and rebuilding North St. Louis. Collaboration is key. And now is the time for positive transformative change that will build back a better St. Louis city. So once again, I want to say congratulations, Madam President.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Appropriate. Okay.
I was just really thinking about the power that is in this room and the power of women and the power of leadership and how it's a continuous string and it's a pendulum that swings. When Madam Controller was speaking, and she was talking about how she was the first woman to be comptroller, I never even thought of that, because I think she's been comptroller since I've been able to vote. So I never even realized or thought about that. And so today, we get to bring up the other part of the Estimate and Apportionment Committee. St. Louis has a, we have a mayor, honey. We have a mayor. She's the people's mayor. We have a mayor, we can clap it up. We have a mayor who didn't dilute her message when she was running for office and who didn't compromise on what she told us she would do when she got into office. We have a mayor that told you that she would work every day to build a St. Louis for everybody. She told you that she would close the workhouse. She told you that she would evaluate the city, that she would do studies, that she would look at what was best for our streets. She told you that she would be fair and that she would be just. She told you that anybody who came to her table and wanted to work with her, she would work with. And then, she told us during campaign season that Dr. Meghan Aliyah Green was the choice for President Board of Aldermen. She said that this city is possible, that we don't have to be in a gridlock between our executive and our legislative branches. She said that it is possible for our leaders to work together. She said it is possible for us to have people who put, leaders who put people over profit and leaders who put progress over pettiness, okay? And so with that being said, I have the honor of calling up Mayor Tashara Jones.
Y'all are too kind. This day isn't about me. It's about Meghan. Good morning. Just like Madam Comptroller, I can see you a little bit, but I need my glasses to see as well. It's so exciting to join you today for this historic occasion of our new board president and, most importantly, my friend, Dr. Meghan Aliyah Green. I want to thank all of you for joining us today, and I want to recognize all of our fellow elected leaders who are here today as well. But before we get started, I want to thank interim president Joe Valmer for stepping into a role he never asked for. Thank you, Joe, for helping guide our city until St. Louis could pick a new board president. And St. Louis, let me tell you, you made a fantastic choice. See, I can't remember exactly when Meghan and I met, but I know it was probably when she was running in the special election for 15th ward in 2014. I remember being immediately impressed by her intelligence, her tenacity, and her grit. Over the last eight years of our friendship, we haven't always agreed. To be honest, we stopped speaking to each other for several months. See, politics and friendship can be difficult at times, and especially when race is involved. And as much as we tried to be color-blind with our friendship, we couldn't ignore it and had to address it head-on and be color-brave and have the difficult conversations. When I didn't endorse her when she ran for president in 2019, oh my God, we had it out. But instead of staying mad at each other forever, which would have been the easy thing to do, we talked it out. We talked it out over a five-hour drive in the middle of winter to Des Moines, Iowa, to see the Democratic National Debates. We discovered a lot about each other on that trip. Our taste in music, for starters. I'm a R&B, 90s hip-hop kind of person, and Meghan just likes the music she likes it. I just had to bob along. But most importantly, we found a way to disagree without becoming disagreeable. And despite our history, despite our friendship, I know that there will be times when we will disagree again. But history shows that we can work through whatever disputes we have on behalf of our city. You see, collaboration and cooperation aren't agreeing with each other 100% of the time. It's coming together around what you do agree on and working through the rest. When Meghan first ran for Aldermen and won by a massive margin, I learned that St. Louis cannot count her out. But let's be honest with, let's be honest here. St. Louis isn't always the most welcoming when people from other cities run for elected office, because what's the question we always ask? What high school did you go to? Meghan was a transplant from upstate New York who decided to stay here after completing her Coro fellowship. She's breaking the mold and starting and charting a new path. I can respect that, and I bet you can too. Some of you may or may not know this, but Shirley Chisholm is my political idol, the first black woman in Congress and the first black woman to seek the presidency 50 years ago this year. Some of her most famous quotes are appropriate for this moment, for this day. For starters, the one that everyone knows. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. I know many people counted Meghan out in this race. They didn't want her and her bold ideas at the table. But let me tell you, Meghan will always bring her own chair. And if she needs backup at the table, she'll bring some for the people too. That's what makes Meghan such an important partner as we work to restore trust and integrity to city government following last summer's shocking federal corruption indictments and reform St. Louis's development incentive process. Now, she'll have a powerful leadership role, not just as president of the Board of Aldermen, but also alongside myself and comptroller Darlene Green on the Board of Estimate and Apportionment. Which reminds me of another famous Shirley Chisholm quote. Tremendous talents, tremendous amounts of talent are lost to our society because that talent wears a skirt. For the first time in St. Louis's history, the top three decision-makers of the Board of Estimate and Apportionment will be women. Women who wear skirts, dresses, and from time to time, a snazzy pantsuit. No dollar will be spent by the city of St. Louis without the approval of three powerful women leaders. See, women lead from a different place and a different point of view. We recognize the voices that are missing from the conversation, or who doesn't have a seat at the table. And as we embrace this new era where women lead, I imagine that we will lead in this way as well. But let me be crystal clear. Being a woman in politics is hard. Everything we say, everything we do, everything we wear faces an extra level of scrutiny. But those challenges also force us to think more strategically and force us to become even stronger leaders. As women, we roll up our sleeves, seek common ground, put our egos aside, and get the job done. The next Shirley Chisholm once said, "At present, our country needs women's idealism and determination, perhaps more in politics than anywhere else." Which reminds me that I should add another history marker for this moment. 51% of our current elected officials are women. In choosing Meghan Green for president of the Board of Aldermen, St. Louisans chose to make a clear break from the past and emphasize the need for our city to continue trying new and innovative solutions to the problems plaguing our city for decades. We will reimagine public safety to lift our families out of the revolving-door incarceration system while connecting the right professional to the right call so that our officers can focus on their main job, solving violent crime. We will address the root causes of crime, creating an environment where all families can thrive. And we will work to modernize city services and bring our government out of the 20th century and into the 21st century, improving reliability for residents. And we will work collaboratively to seize once-in-a-lifetime opportunities from ARPA, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and other federal funding opportunities to make change residents can see and feel. We've already helped thousands of families put food on the table with direct cash assistance, supported hundreds of small businesses, and helped keep St. Louis families in their homes. And while my focus is on allocating our remaining ARPA dollars in the bank in the coming months, we cannot forget the other monumental opportunity, the historic RAM settlement. I was proud to work with St. Louis County and the RSA to deliver a compromise that will deliver a majority of the settlement funds to the city. And if the RSA approves the deal, I look forward to working with the Board of Aldermen and President and Comptroller Green to begin the deliberate, careful process to figure out where we should use these funds for the most long-term transformative impact. But that's looking months and years ahead down the road. Today, we celebrate a new Today, we celebrate a new era of cooperation in St. Louis city government, a recommitment to achieving real substantive progressive change for our city. We still have a lot of work to do together, St. Louis. But last but not least, Shirley Chisholm once said, "We will be as bold as the first man or woman to eat an oyster." In this new era of women leading our government, we will move forward boldly together. Thank you. Congratulations, Madam President, and God bless you.
Alicia, how are you feeling?
Inspired, empowered, motivated, determined, audacious, bold, daring, hopeful, energetic.
Bold is the word today. It is so important. We are moving the city forward, a place where everybody is welcome, a place that works for everyone. And I have a small story to tell about my friend, Dr. Megan Alea Green. My story. She's a great friend. I love her. And I will say that she is so committed to the cause. I met her many years ago when she came knocking on my door, on my apartment. I opened up the door, we started talking, and all of a sudden, my dog decided to run away from the house. I'm barefooted, I'm running out on the street to go and pick up my dog, but Megan stood right there, guarded by my door so nobody would come in and take advantage of the opportunity until I found my dog and brought it, brought him back to my house. So thank you for doing that. She had me at guarding my house from anybody coming in. And we've been friends ever since. Megan, Dr. Green, you are a leader who listens and not just do the walk, you do, you just, you do the walk, not just the talk. So she is somebody who is intentionally building bridges with the Latino community, with the foreign-born community, with everybody in St. Louis who's willing to have her sit down and listen to what our concerns are. Her dedication to equity and inclusion, as I mentioned before, it's always at the forefront of her commitment to community. So it is a great pleasure, right, Alicia?
Right.
To now welcome our friend, my friend. Huh? Okay, go ahead. Sorry about that. I'm getting excited.
My story of meeting Dr. Megan Green is not as fun or joyous. I met Dr. Green, like most of us in this room, at a, at a protest. Someone had been shot several times and they had been left in the street for four and a half hours. And I went out into the community and I was 18 and I didn't know what else I could do, but I knew that I could use my voice and I knew that I could use my body. And I, I kept seeing this, this woman who had this like green Jeep with this long curly hair, I kept seeing her on the front lines. And the first time, I don't even know if Megan remembers, but the first time that we, we had a conversation, it was right after a protest and Megan and I sat at this little diner and she literally talked to me about politics and local policy and are you aware of your Board of Aldermen? Do you know who represents you? Do you know who holds the power around you? I mean, it was just like, we had literally just got done running and, and protesting and using our voices and she jumped right into this mode. And ever since then, Megan and I have been about as thick as thieves. I think just like Tashara said, it's not that we always agree, but she has always been a supporter. And my favorite thing about Megan is Megan, Megan has taught me that what a leader knows how to do is build other leaders. Megan has ran for offices before and there's times where she could have threw a temper tantrum, she could have sat on her couch and I have seen her strategize and figure out, how do we get more leaders that are aligned with the vision for St. Louis in this position? She's been bold, she's been daring. She said the things that we all know may be true now, but before there were any receipts and before there were any legal consequences, she called them out. If it meant standing up against the person who was against her, if it meant doing what was unpopular, she has always managed to do that. I couldn't be any more honored or have any more pleasure when I think of what, of what public service looked like, when I think of solidarity, whether you're talking about solidarity between women, whether you're talking about intergenerational solidarity, racial solidarity, all of the things that it's going to take for us to bring about liberated society, that is what Dr. Megan Green is. And so I am so excited and I am so honored to introduce what I have now dubbed the She and A Committee, the She and A Committee.
She and A.
The final part of the She and A Committee, Dr. Megan Green. Okay. In government, you gotta just go with it. We're gonna do the oath and the swearing in first and then we will get remarks from Dr. Green.
Are you ready? I am so ready. All right, everyone's ready. Repeat after me, raise your hand, please. I am Megan Alea Green.
I'm Megan Alea Green.
Of the city of St. Louis in the state of Missouri.
Of the city of St. Louis in the state of Missouri.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
To the position of president of the Board of Aldermen.
To the position of president of the Board of Aldermen.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear that I have all the qualifications.
Do solemnly swear that I have all of the qualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
Named in the charter for the office.
Named in the charter for the office.
Or employment I'm about to assume.
Or employment that I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and the ordinances of this city.
And the charter and the ordinances of this city.
That I will be influenced only.
That I will be influenced only.
By the consideration of fitness.
By the consideration of fitness.
In the appointment, promotion, demotion.
In the appointment, promotion, demotion.
Suspension or discharge.
Suspension or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expand nor authorize.
That I will not expand or authorize.
The expenditure of money otherwise.
The expenditure of money otherwise.
Than for adequate consideration.
Than for adequate consideration.
An efficient service to the city.
An efficient service to the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office or employment.
The duties of my office and employment.
Congratulations, President Dr. Megan Alea Green. Love you.
All right. Good morning. Good morning. Mayor Jones, Comptroller Green, members of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, other elected officials, city employees, honored guests, clergy members, labor leaders, and all other members of the public, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming out this morning. I am the 22nd person to serve as president of the Board of Aldermen and the first woman elected to do so. Being number 22 is an honor and a privilege, but being the first is a challenge to have the difference mean something. Together with Mayor Jones and Comptroller Green, I am proud to be the final piece of our city's new She and A. A Board of Estimate and Apportionment with a new perspective. And I commit myself to you, your family, your neighborhood, and to your dream of what this city and your life can be in it, a city that works for everyone. I approach my service with hope and with a sense of great urgency. As we all know, our community has its fair share of challenges, but I look at every challenge as an opportunity to do something important, faster, fairer, more effectively. This term is less than five months and in that time, there is no shortage of work to be done. For sure, our city's legislative body has its work cut out for us. Over these months, we must prepare the 28-member Board of Aldermen to be reorganized as a body of 14 members with a professional staff to ensure that we have the tools to make good laws and be accountable to constituent requests and needs. Over these months, we must appropriate ARPA funds and infrastructure funds and begin the process of determining the best use for the RAM settlement funds, balancing present and future needs, repair and investment. This will require a lot of goodwill and mature discussion to make sure that we are using these funds in a way to create a St. Louis that works for everyone. Over these months, we must rebuild our city workforce that is necessary to provide quality city services in every corner of our city. We must provide the compensation and benefits like childcare, home buying assistance, student loan assistance that is necessary to both attract and retain the workers we need so that we can ensure our trash is picked up, grass is cut, trees are planted, snow is plowed, emergency services are dispatched quickly, water is safe, sidewalks are repaired, and streets are paved. And over these months, we must begin down the road of tax incentive reform that will ensure that our schools and city coffers benefit from new development from day one. We must increase the availability of affordable housing, pursue efforts to prevent the need for evictions, ensure the right to form unions, and ensure that public benefits are attached to all publicly subsidized projects. And this is not all. As we emerge from this pandemic, we must make sure that public health is funded and supported, including reproductive health care and abortion rights. We must ensure that we are training our students for the jobs of today and tomorrow. We must pursue public safety strategies that address the root causes of crime while also enacting police accountability measures that will restore trust in our police. We must finish the job of decriminalizing marijuana, from updating hiring policies to changing zoning regulations to accommodate recreational marijuana facilities. And we must send a marijuana tax to the ballot to allow the wider community to benefit from this new law. And finally, we must implement a charter commission and should the mayor choose to pursue it, confirm new freeholders to approve, to improve city government and encourage regional cooperation. There is so much work for my colleagues and I to get done at the Board and it's a lot of change for our residents to consider. But I'm confident that by working together, we can overcome institutional inertia and historic suspicions and get it done. Let me rephrase that into a sentence for emphasis. Only by working together can we get things done. To my Aldermanic colleagues, I promise an end to the toxic culture in the chamber over the past few years. Those bully days are over. Enthusiasm will never be punished and experience will not be ignored. And if you have ever, for any reason, thought that my door was closed, please try it again today. To the mayor and the comptroller, I promise a good heart and an open mind. I will not be a rubber-stamp road, you know, or, but I will also not be a roadblock bought by lobbyists and by special interests. The only agenda that I will bring to E and A is the people's agenda and I know all of you in this room share that. And finally, to the people of this city, I promise to put your children and your grandparents first. And I don't say that rhetorically. I absolutely mean it. I mean it in the same way that our Congresswoman does. If you want something from me between now and April, you better be prepared in your proposal to tell me how this will benefit our youth and our seniors immediately. I would be remiss for not thanking a few folks that are here today. Our labor leaders who have put so much on the line in their support of me and their support of working people in our city. Also want to thank Gilberto and Alicia for putting this together today and for all of their wonderful remarks. And I would like to introduce my first two staff hires. My Chief of Staff, Jay Nelson. And my Policy Director, Christina Germinia. Mayor Jones, Comptroller Green, members of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, other elected officials, city employees, honored guests, clergy members, labor leaders, all of St. Louis, it is time to get to work. It is time to set aside our differences, it is time to build together a city that works for everyone. I'm excited to be president and I'm optimistic about the next five months and I'm ready, so I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
What a historic occasion we witnessed today, huh?
Absolutely.
The She and A?
The She and A.
She and A, can I come through that?
Okay. Leadership, leadership is not a person or a position. It is a complex moral relationship between people based on trust, obligation, commitment, emotion, and a shared vision of the good. Today, I hope that Gilberto and all the speakers that you heard today, I hope that we help you, if you leave with nothing else, you leave knowing that we all share a vision to build a St. Louis for all of us. I hope that as a city and as a place, we understand that there's no, there's no example and there's no scenario where one part of us fail and one part of us thrive. We all win or we all lose. And so today, as we continue, as the work continues, I hope that you show up at your meetings when there's time for public hearings and public comments. I hope that when the time has come to discuss our city budgets, that you give your opinions and that you give your thoughts. And I hope that when you are making decisions every day in your personal life, you are thinking of your neighbor, you are thinking of your community member, you are thinking of the children and the inheritance of our city. Power is rarely conceded. It is built amongst us as a collective. Change does not come overnight, but it can come if all of us rise up and do our parts. So today, I think I speak for Gilberto and I when I say that it's been the biggest honor to emcee this and host this and, and be hearing this energy amongst all of us. And I think that I can speak for all of us in our room and I say that we want to build a St. Louis that is a place of love and a place and an opportunity to thrive for every single person within it.
A place that works for everyone. So thank you again and have a great rest of your day. Thank you.